It's Wednesday, July 13th, 2016. And if you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the sun's shining today, the rain is behind us.
Do you know where you are?
Yeah, we're here at 555 Court Street Northeast.
I only bring it up because you didn't mention it, and I noticed this is not the county fair. That was a lot more.
Yeah, that was. We were just talking about that, the county fair board session last Thursday. Next year, we're going to have it in one of the barns, the pig barns or something.
I'd like that.
With all those Brentano pigs.
Champion pigs.
Pigs around. Or maybe in the flower garden, the flower display.
It gets old after a little.
Okay. So we have nobody signed up for public comment today. We'll move right into the consent calendar. And I don't remember, is it?
It's my turn.
It is your turn.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we've moved today's consent calendar. Under Finance, approve a resolution to authorize financing of real and personal property in an amount not to exceed $10 million for the construction and improvements of several capital projects. Under Health, approve the contract for services with Dr. James F. Miller to provide mental health assessments and care to adult behavioral health clients for $540,000 through June 30th, 2019. Under Public Works, approve an order to schedule a public hearing for July 27th, 2016, to consider solid waste collection rate changes. Under Sheriff's Office, approve the contract for services with Bridgeway Recovery Services to provide recovery services to the Family Sentencing Alternative Program for $268,644 through June 30th, 2017. Approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Aurora in the amount of $173,964 for law enforcement services through June 30th, 2017. Approve Amendment Number Two to an intergovernmental agreement with Shemecata Community College for the SOAR program in the amount of $185,640 for a revised contract value of $445,692 through June 30th, 2017. And approve Amendment Number One to a contract with Telmate LLC for $104,000 for telecommunications services at the Marion County Jail through April 30th, 2017.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just want to point out that we did, we did discuss in pretty broad detail the finance issue that's in here this week with our $10 million, not to exceed $10 million construction loan. And what a great interest rate we're getting on that. And just want to say good work to our finance. And John, thank you for doing that. Any other comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Consent calendar is done. First action item, Business Services, consider approval of standard professional services contract with Carlson Bet Architects PC to provide architect and engineering services for the juvenile court expansion and administrative remodel projects for $598,0051 through June 30th, 2019. And Colleen is here to share with us. Good morning.
Morning, Chair, Commissioners. This morning, we want to consider the approval for the standard professionals contract with Carlson Beatt, Beit, Beit.
Right.
Like White. Architects to provide architect and engineering services for both the juvenile department and Sheriff's Parole and Probation Central Office projects. Total about, for those is $598,051 and $858,490 respectively. We've hired Carlson Beit to do both projects. We start stakeholder meetings with your approval today. Questions about the contracts?
Okay, so we're actually looking at both items one and two on our action list here, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions about those?
Just that Carlson Beit is no relation. Put that out there, I always do. Somebody once said that I was hiring people, you know, like, so it's like, there are a lot of Carlsons out there.
No worries there.
Commissioner.
If I could, Colleen, these are pretty cut and dried and nowhere we're going to go, but I wonder if you could expand a little bit about what you're hoping that their services will provide, what insights, anything like that.
Sure. So Carlson Beit's coming in, we've done some preliminary space planning programming with each juvenile as well as MCSO, parole and probation, and the Central District Office. So those, those space planning things are probably 95% done. We wanted to do some of that preliminary work so we could get a feel of what the programs wanted. We meet with them next week with Carlson Beit and the, and those teams, as well as the state courts because of the juvenile court expansion project as well. We meet with them next week to confirm and refine what those details look like, and they start designing conceptually for what those projects will look like. Right after that, we'll be coming to you to talk to you about a CMGC proposal as far as hiring a CMGC to expedite that process. We hope to break ground by September on several of those projects.
You might want to not use acronyms.
Thank you. Contract Manager, General Contractor Agreement is what we're shooting for. We'll be coming to talk to you about that later. So right now, we have just, all the projects are ready to go. Central District Office and Parole and Probation, like I said, the sheriff and his team have been fully involved in that and fully vetted. We're also working with Fay Fagel and her team, as well as Diane Morris and the State Administrative Office for State Courts Expansion, as well as the DA, because the DA has some folks in that facility as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Chair, Camera, if I could, then I would make a motion that we accept the recommendation and approve the standard professional service contract between Marion County and Carlson Beit Architects PC.
Okay, we have a motion. Oh, sorry.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So the motion is to approve both the contracts for the juvenile court expansion as well as the Sheriff's Office, Parole and Probation, and Central District Office projects.
I'm fine with that, but to be clear, I was just talking about the first one, but if you'd like to combine them, I'm.
I think we should do two separate motions there. On the agenda is two separate motions.
Okay, so, so we're just doing item number one. So this is a motion to approve the contract for the juvenile department court expansion and administrative remodel project for $598,051. Okay? That's what the motion is. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. You want to make a second motion then?
Sure. I would move that we, the board, approve the standard professional services contract with Carlson Beit Architects PC to provide architect and engineering services for the Sheriff's Office, Parole and Probation, and Central District Office projects for $858,490 through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
Sorry I confused the issue.
No worries.
All right. We have a, one item, action item left under the Sheriff's Department. I don't see anybody here from the Sheriff's Department.
Maybe we should take a recess and see if they're on their way. Okay? Okay.
Would you like to do that, Mr. Latimer?
So we're on item number three on the action list.
This is, this is a contract we do periodically because we, we buy drugs for prisoners in the jail. We're required to provide those services under federal law, and this is a contract for three years that would provide those pharmaceutical services for inmates in Marion County. This is not a new item. We've been doing this now for quite a while. We do, because it's such an expensive cost for the jail, we, we do go, we do go out for RFPs to make sure we get good prices. And this is Correct RX Pharmacy Services, not only works with Marion County, but with other county and jails. And this is, they not only do a good job, but they're also give us the best price we can get on, on those pharmaceuticals. So I recommend that we go ahead and do this. It will give us pharmaceutical services for three years for inmates in the jail.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions, Mr. Latimer?
I might just have a couple of comments. Yes, we've seen this before in, previously, I guess, and I note the Sheriff's Office recommendation too, so that implies that they're happy with the services and price. Seems like this could have been a consent item, but since we're asked to look at it, I'm happy to, and I'm going to make the motion that we approve the contract for $1,008,800 with Correct RX for Pharmacy Services, Marion County Jail through June 30th, 2019.
I'll second the motion. I think why it's not a consent is because it's over a million dollars, right?
Just a little.
Yeah.
And 140-page contract presentation.
Definitely.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's done, and we have a public hearing at 9:30, so why don't we take a recess until 9:30? Unless you want to have any kinds of discussion right now on the record? Nope?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll recess until 9:30. Okay, we are back, and we're going to open a public hearing in Public Works, a public hearing to consider amendments to the Marion County Urban and Rural Zone Codes. Brandon.
Thank you.
Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. In January this year, the Board of Commissioners approved a resolution initiating the county's consideration of amendments to the Marion County Urban and Rural Zone Codes. The Board directed the Planning Commission to consider the amendments and make a recommendation to the Board. The Planning Commission held a work session in February this year and a public hearing in March. No person testified at the hearing regarding the amendments. The Planning Commission unanimously approved the amendments to the Board as recommended by staff. These amendments are extensive, they cover multiple areas of the code in both the urban and rural codes, but they're relatively minor in nature. Overall, the amendments, staff hopes, will streamline the planning process for customers and make the standards clearer and simpler for proprietors and neighbors both. The majority of the amendments are to incorporate mandatory changes to state law that are in the statutes and the rules into our local code. Amendments are also being made to reflect the recent model code adopted by the Department of Land Conservation and Development for rural farm and forest zones. The remainder of the amendments are optional for the county to adopt and relate to paving standards in Brooks, standards for mobile food vendors, home occupations and home office requirements, legal lot status and others. Subsequent to the Planning Commission hearing, planning staff identified additional recommended amendments, and the Board held a work session on the Planning Commission's recommendation and staff's additional recommended amendments. In response to discussion at the work session, staff made two changes to the recommendation before the Board at its public hearing today. One, paving standards in the urban unincorporated community of Brooks would only apply in the stormwater management areas. And two, home occupations would be permitted without a permit and would provide for a minimum of one employee and one sign in both urban and rural zones. That option would be, as a limited home occupation, that option would be in the, in the zone code. Staff recommends that the Board approve the amendments as provided today and instruct staff to return with an ordinance reflecting its decision. With that, I'm available for any questions you have.
Okay. Do you, that's a question over there?
Well, thank you.
My microphone was off. Questions?
Just a couple, Brandon. I'm looking at the mandatory lists from legislature, I take it, and two, two don't quite, one's just interesting that you can kill up to 1,000 poultry as an outright permit, permitted non-farm use. So what does that mean and what, it's not relative to us, but if you know anything about it, I'm just curious.
It was a change the legislature made of the state, the statute in 2013. Some processing farm crops, farm products is allowed in the rural, and this clarifies that as administrative review, as kind of a more simplified, straightforward permitting process, you can slaughter up to 1,000 poultry.
Why that number? Is that?
I don't know.
Okay.
I think beyond that, there are other ways to slaughter poultry on rural land that are conditional use, that you have to go through more of a process and a review, and it could be that there are waste.
A thousand trips that you need a real system then?
Waste issues. Or maybe just a sheer number of space, more than 1,000 poultry would take up for slaughter, that you have to go through a more intense review at the county level.
Then the other one that just doesn't quite make sense to me, prohibits property line adjustments from causing Measure 3749-created property to go above maximum lot sizes. Why, why would they care if there's a maximum lot size? Why is there a maximum lot size? And why would you care if somebody did it bigger? Is it the thought that later on, that you want, they try to break it up again? What?
So the Measure 49 properties, when the state approved Measure 49 land divisions, they approved them in a special way. They're outside the land use process, and there's a specific set of requirements the state gave. And when the state gave that right to divide the land, they said, here is your maximum size that you're getting as part of this division. And on high-value farmland, that's two acres, and other types of farmland, it's five. So the state said, the lot you can create is a maximum of two acres in size. And what, what almost happened, or I think some counties where it nearly happened, the state was concerned, that after that two-acre lot was created, people came back in and wanted to make that two-acre lot bigger. And since it was approved for a certain size in that special way as part of 49, that's the only size that was, that lot's allowed to be. It could be configured and shifted in, in its way it's configured, but the size is the maximum that the state granted under that 49. This clarifies it so someone doesn't do that, and then someone else buys that property, say, and then they bought an illegal property, that the lines need to be adjusted and corrected with the neighboring property, which is hard to do.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if this would be asked otherwise, have there been any comments, concerns from the public, or has anything come in that I didn't see or we should be aware of?
We haven't received any comments. Most of these are pretty straightforward. Some of these are relatively minor. There's ways to get through the land use, county land use process now, but these new ways should improve that and clarify that, like, like for the legal lot status, the year that we legalized the lot status. We did send out notice to the industrial and commercial property owners in Brooks about the possible paving standards being adopted. There's an alternative provision in there, that if the Public Works Director approves an alternative method for paving other than concrete or asphalt, and so maybe they've seen that, there's a lot of paving already in Brooks. It's a quasi-urban area, so the expectation for some paving may not be that out, outside, you know, the box to think about. So we haven't had any, haven't had any response or comments from the public.
Thank you. That's all I've got.
All right. Commissioner?
I've got a couple of questions. First of all, on the mandatory ones, my understanding is we've actually been operating as if the code includes the mandatory provisions just off the statutes. Is that correct? So these aren't really, I mean, they're, they're conforming our code to the statutes, but our change in practice has happened prior to this. Is that?
The mandatory ones, we've already started implementing.
Right, okay. And then the other question I have, and this is just kind of an off-the-wall question, if you don't know, we can talk about it later. But I was, I was reading recently an article about FEMA, and there's some concerns going on about that they're imposing regulations that affect local land use, and Peter DeFazio is getting involved in it. Are you familiar with what is going on there? And I noticed we have some floodplain FEMA types of changes here. Are those, are whatever they're concerned about, will that further impact our code? Do you know what's going on there?
Sure. I think I know what's going on there. That exists, the changes that are here are just for the current code, and to make some tweaks to clarify, rearrange, to bring things, keep things up to date, and to provide a little bit of flexibility for the county on map amendments and such, that most jurisdictions have, now the county will have that too. What is coming down the road, and it's, it's already kind of here in some ways, it started in April, is that at the federal level, there's a lawsuit between National Marine Fisheries and FEMA, and these, National Marine Fisheries said, the way FEMA, your operating floodplain programs in Oregon are causing damage, are causing harm to threatened and endangered species. And for the valley here, it's threatened salmon species. The particular standards and the things you allow for development under the FEMA regulations affect fish. And so in April this year, it came out, NOAA, Fisheries and Marine Science came out with a long list of, these are the things you need to change in order to stop harming, stop affecting fish. And they came out with a proposed timeline that goes from now until 2021 or so. These changes are really, are fairly dramatic. There's changes to, there could be new maps produced where the floodplain area could grow. The flood elevations that people build to, they could be greater in the future for a number of reasons than they are today. The regulations are going to change, the standards for development could change, there could be limitations in the types of development that can happen in certain areas. There'll be whole brand-new areas that are mapped, like erosion areas that we didn't have mapped before. New areas could be in the floodway that were never in the floodway before, just based on the nature of the water flowing through is going to create a floodway. Before, it was a little, there was a little more involved than that. These changes are in the works now, and there is a period where the county will have to adopt interim standards to be able to continue to apply, to be able to continue to issue floodplain permits. We have to have them adopted, memory serves, by 2018. But, so there's a kind of a process goes interim standards, and there's mapping, then there's some final standards, and then there's some federal regulations, and then there's some, the very, very final standards. It kind of bounces back and forth all the way to 2021. And there's reporting and other things that property owners are going to have to do as part of a permit. Right now, Legal Counsel and I, we've talked, there's, what we can see right now is that the existing ordinance, permits issued under the existing ordinance, we are certain, are good up until September 15th this year. After that, and we are, all jurisdictions are seeking clarification on this, between September 15th this year and 2018, we've got a two-year timeframe where we have to adopt interim measures. And it's not clear that we can issue permits until interim measures are adopted. And so, separate from this, separate from this update, there will be, there will be changes to the zone code, there'd be a set of interim standards, and there'd be a set of final standards adopted at different times. If that September 15th date is a true date, where if, until we adopt interim standards, we're kind of dead in the water for issuing floodplain permits for almost two years, we want to give the, staff wants to give the county the option of, of being able to continue to issue permits, if that's the fact. So next week, I'll bring to the Board consideration initiating a process to adopt interim standards that would go into place September 15th, or 14th, go into place in time in case that, that is a, kind of a firm date in the future. We are very slowly, too slowly, learning more about what is coming and when things are going to happen. Some of the things that local jurisdictions need to know aren't, aren't becoming, aren't very forthcoming, because when you're at the federal and the state level, you're not issuing those kind of permits on a regular basis and dealing with the property owners. So they don't know maybe how important it is for us to be able to provide these answers and continue with things. We will have the option before the Board by September 14th to adopt interim standards to continue to issue floodplain permits, or if we find out that date isn't firm, then we can, we could also postpone that hearing to further down the road to the final time when we actually need to adopt.
Wow, I'm glad I asked that question.
If I could, we've kind of talked about it before it came through, this is a maybe thing, but when Representative Schrader is here next week, this is exactly what I want to talk to him about. This is a huge power grab. I don't know the authority, it doesn't make sense, but it has big consequences to Marion County and especially to our residents and property holders. So I hope common sense will prevail, and I hope that our whole delegation, apparently Oregon, if you just picture it with so many rivers, they changed the maps, changed the rules, make, those people that exist, maybe weren't in a floodplain, or now they are, their insurance rates go up so high, they lined that up early by making mandatory, if you have a mortgage, that you have flood insurance, so you're a captive audience. It's a wicked and evil thing, and I, then I worry, does it really accomplish anything? But just more regulation, more control, and detriment to the county. So I think if you've, I think we need to spend some real time on this, and if you could start thinking about it, it's a little off the subject today, maybe not, but we ought to, we ought to really think about it, we ought to think about it, adding it to our federal agendas, and if it, if it's as bad as I'm afraid.
Well, that would be the question, if it's court-imposed now, and in this article, and I'm not sure, I might have read it in the Statesman Journal, if Congress, if Congressman DeFazio is taking up the charge, does that mean that there's momentum in Congress to act? Do they have the authority to try to create some federal legislation that would somehow mitigate what the court has said?
So, I'm not an attorney for federal things.
Yeah, I know you're not an attorney, I'm just curious whether.
We have one here though.
We do. So, Legal Counsel may know better, but this is, the Dangerous, this is based on the Danger Species Act, and the Danger Species Act has a number of sections, and it's a very specialized law on its own. You could probably just practice just to deal with the Danger Species Act solely. It's very complicated, and there's a lot involved with it. One of the sections involves local people not harming fish. But the section that this, so we kind of are familiar with that. We manage our, our roads programs, we do a lot of things at the county to keep the streams healthy and keep banks maintained, so we don't affect fish and individuals. We don't dump things down the drain and things like that that flow to the river, we don't affect fish. But this is coming from a different section of the Danger Species Act. This is coming from, this, the section that says, federal agencies need to comply with the Danger Species Act. And what NOAA said, National, the NOAA National Oceanic, Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration said, FEMA, other federal agency, you are doing things that are in your laws that affect fish, that violate the Endangered Species Act, that have the potential to cause harm. So because it's between two federal agencies, the, the battle is there between them, and the locals have almost no input. The state has had very little input via FEMA, a fair amount, but very little via FEMA, the state of Oregon, Governor's Office, things like that. So it's, it's very complicated to get involved in that. And then the county, we, we implement federal regulations for FEMA. We're required to implement the floodplain program for the county. So the battle's taking place up here, and the county has to implement what FEMA adopts. And so it is important to get the congressional delegation involved because it is at the federal level, and it does involve the Endangered Species Act and changes, I presume, if changes were made to the Danger Species Act, then the exemption would be developed.
That would be a big, heavy lift though, to try to do that.
But nothing at the local or state level, I see, would make an impact.
Huh.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John?
If I might ask a question. I'm, I'm curious of how far afield this might go. Does it affect development on what have been assessed as slide-prone areas?
In a way, so it's always been FEMA's mandate, if there's a water-induced landslide, or if there's water-induced erosion, there's, there's a, there's a, we're learning about this at the local level, but FEMA is supposed to incorporate water-caused erosion and landslide-type problems. So there are areas with steep, steep banks on streams, where that's probably most likely where you'll see the new erosion things, new regulations come on. But just steep slopes in general, probably we won't have the kind of mapping to tell if there's water causing erosion or landslide.
Okay.
There is another component to this where, as streams migrate over time, there may be mapping of the long-term migration of rivers and streams, and that potential for those changes to those streams could become areas that are regulated.
Well, Mr. Chair.
The Sandy River is a classic. If we look at the maps, it's gone all over the place, and you can build up near it, and then a few years later, your house is under it or over it, and that changes so much. But long-term, the changes that could happen to different streams in the county, because that stream could migrate there or had migrated there in the past, that could be an area, even though it's not there today. even though it's not there today, that's considered part of the floodplain for regulation purposes. So the changes in the mapping are really, could be, there are some are really extreme and some could be even more.
Well, I, Mr. Chair, I guess my question is, how far afield would this go? I mean, we're thinking about the Willamette River. There are places all along the Willamette River that may be half a mile away from the river, but there are slopes that are slide-prone. Will this affect that? Or is it only in the, in the floodplain?
At this point, I think it won't affect the slide-prone slopes far from the river, but the catch is, tributaries to rivers that are protected up to a certain distance, we don't know what that distance is. This will be in the final regulation by 2021. Tributaries to a major river, they could be included in the regulations too. So you definitely could get into steep slopes if you're within that tributary distance, but that's really unclear right now, what that is.
And there are a lot of those that go into the Willamette.
Sure.
I think of Salem, Battle Creek going into Mill Creek and all the steep slopes even right out, South Salem around a controversial piece of property that's happening in the city of Salem right now, there's a creek running right through the middle of it that contributes to the Willamette River. But who knows? Wow. Any other questions?
Nope.
I just, I...
Don't want to know.
All I would, I just, and this is probably more of an editorial and personal experience comment. I'm glad I'm, I'm serving as a Marion County Commissioner, but I'm looking at the, the question that one of my peers had up here about the slaughter of a thousand poultry outright. And I was there when we passed that bill in 2013, and in fact, I was on the committee that sent it out unanimously, and there were some good comments about chickens at that point in time.
I wish I'd have known, I'd have been...
And the need, but just allowing it in a, it's a non-farm use in clarifying that it could be used in an EFU zone, and it was for some people who potentially raise a lot of chickens and then need to process them on their EFU land. So that's what that was all about. It's interesting, the process that we're, that I'm now seeing, because I, I went back and looked at the measure summary and the, the potential impact revenue, and it did say minor to county. So here we are, spending time and money and resources, three years later, on something that the legislature did, yeah, three years ago. And I'll take responsibility for voting for a thousand chickens being slaughtered.
I want you to, but doesn't it sound like a case where you made state law for one individual situation that's...
Uh, I don't know if it was one individual or if there was more than one facilities. I know the sponsor of the bill was from Hillsborough, so it could have been something that was going on out in Washington County. Yeah. Chair Clem let the bill come through. We all voted for it. But you're against a thousand chickens?
I'm all for it.
In fact, it's a new name of an organization that I want to sponsor.
Well, aren't most bills because...
Thousand Chickens of Oregon, is that it? That's a good one.
Because aren't most bills because one person wants something, and then you just have to make sure it doesn't hurt everybody else, right, in order to let them do what they need to do?
Yeah. So a lot of, a lot of details, I mean, there's other bills in here, but I appreciate you, you bringing all these to us, Brandon. I think we've...
We're ready?
The Oregon Constitution prohibits local legislation, I mean, specific for one purpose, doesn't it?
Well, no, what they, one person brings something and says, everybody ought to do this because it benefits me.
I understand that.
And then we check out, and then people come out of the woodwork and say, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, and that's where hearings happen.
Well, I'm looking back to see if I declared a conflict of interest because I didn't have a thousand chickens then, but now that we've passed a chicken ordinance in Marion County...
Well, it's a good thing we don't allow a thousand chickens in the backyard, isn't it?
Are you sure?
I don't know. How many chickens can I have in an RA zone?
All right, well, Mr. Chair...
999, for you.
Okay.
I move that we close the public hearing and that the board approve the amendments to the Marion County Urban and Rural Zone Codes as presented, and direct staff to return with an ordinance that reflects those changes.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, so we have...
Felt like I should cluck again.
Adopted. The amendments to the zone codes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Both of you, Joe's sitting out there, he didn't speak, but for the, the detailed work that you do is really, really appreciated in Marion County, both from the standpoint of, I guess, following the law, but also trying to help those that are trying to make things happen from an economic development, figure out how to do that within the guidelines and the rules and the law. So thank you for what you do.
You're welcome.
Appreciate both of you. Okay, so we've concluded our public hearing. I'll read the calendar. Tomorrow is the 14th of July already, the month is half gone. 7:30 in the morning, Kaiser Marion County meeting at Sherry's. I will not be there, I'm assuming one or both of you will be there, John will probably be there, at 7:30 at Sherry's on, that's Sherry's calling now. 4998 River Road, North Kaiser. Also tomorrow at 1:30, the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Veterans Subcommittee, location Academy Building, room 212 at 182 Southwest Academy Street in Dallas. Tomorrow, Thursday, 2 o'clock, Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Affordable Housing Committee, location Salem Conference Room, here on the first floor at 555 Court Street Northeast. Monday, the 18th, 8:30 a.m., calendar review here on the fifth floor, Silverton Conference Room. Monday, the 18th, at 9 a.m., management update here in the fifth floor, Silverton Conference Room. Monday, the 18th, at 1 p.m., semi-annual service district meeting, Brooks, East Salem, LaBiche and Fargo, here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Tuesday, the 19th, at 9 a.m., a work session, new stormwater map and permit, location here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Wednesday, the 20th, at 9 a.m., back here for our board session. Wednesday, the 20th, at 12:45, Ferraris Lumber Tour, location Ferraris Lumber, 141 14th Street in Lyons. And Wednesday at 1:45, the 20th, at 1:45, lunch meeting at Giovanni's Mountain Pizza, wow, 146 Northwest San Yum Boulevard, Mill City. And also the 20th, there is a, at 4 o'clock Wednesday, the Mid Valley Homeless Initiative Full Task Force Meeting, location Civic Center, Kaiser Civic Center, 930 Chihuahua Road, Northeast Kaiser. So I'm not too busy with the schedule. I almost got it on one page, Christie, thank you. Yeah. Some good things happening next week. I know that tour, we didn't list all of them because not all of us, there's not going to be more than one of us on the second half of that tour, but Congressman Schrader will be here and will be touring the canyon and some of the, the work that we've been doing up there, as well as some of the challenges that we still have before us. It'll be great to have him up there and see that firsthand, because I know we've lobbied him, not lobbied, we've educated him.
See, that makes it sounds nicer.
We've educated him on those issues over the last couple of years. It'd be great to have him witness those firsthand, so I'm pretty excited about having him on that tour. Tomorrow, I'm going to be touring the forest down in Douglas County too, so, haven't done a forestry tour for probably, I don't know, probably four years. It'd be interesting to see some of the forest practices and how they've changed just in the last few years and what's going on down there. Sure is a lot of items for the homeless task force. Commissioner, you want to, anything that you want to update us on, on how that's going?
Well, the full task force has been meeting and having mostly presentations while there are eight subcommittees that are doing the work of trying to come up with recommendations that we're hoping we can pull together in November and December as they bring them forward, and then we'll complete our work in February of next year, so that's what's going on. There's forums and affordable housing, veterans, you heard a lot of them, financial, we got, Mayor Peterson has bankers getting together, figuring out the credit pieces, and there's a social services, education part, so all different aspects of it.
Great.
That's all I know.
I wanted to, if I could, just, I, I just thoroughly enjoyed the fair this year. It just, everything seemed to be upgraded. Happy, I don't know if our numbers are great, the weather was iffy, even my wife and I didn't bring grandson in because it looked like it was raining on Sunday, but a lot of effort and everything went pretty well. And then the only other minor, just to tell you, I, I see the calendar, it's, my son's 35th birthday, I'm all the sudden, Nate. And maybe what brought it to mind is, we let everybody choose what they want for their birthday dinner, and his choice was chicken strips. I'm trying to make a connection whether allowing that thousand chickens might have...
It helps.
Yes, thank you.
Chicken strips are real chicken, so...
They're not?
I'm just making that up.
Oh, yeah, they are. My wife, my wife will do homemade, you know, breast and chicken strips.
They're all done, yes, ready to go.
Well, now you're, now you're making me hungry, Sam.
That was his favorite youth, childhood meal, apparently.
Last night, I said all barbecue hamburgers, and it started to rain on the way home, and so Judy made, she took the hamburger and made these, she does this little, you know, makes little patties, and then she does a gravy and mashed potatoes and peas, like one of my favorite things to eat. It is really good. Some hot sauce. Yesterday, I did get to go to, with Nick Harville, we went up to Pacific Coast Avionics. They, they are in the top 10 producer or salespeople of Garmin Avionics, and they install these Garmin, this Garmin equipment in planes. And I think he said by the year 2020, no, there was two years left, all planes in the United States, there's 270,000 planes. What is the date today?
13.
13?
Wednesday is 13.
Have to be updated, and these guys are, they're wanting to expand, and they were looking for, I guess, 30,000 square feet somewhere throughout the county.
It's not available?
And, well, we found, they found a spot right next to where they're at. The guy that owns it is going to tear down an existing building and put a hanger in for them, and it was really positive, but they were looking for, how could we help, you know, and so a really good project that would create some, somewhere between 10 to 20 jobs over the next two years at the Aurora Airport. So that's encouraging and improves some asset base there, and it was real positive to be able to go and come away with some good news. All right? Anything else?
No.
Now we're going to adjourn.